Counsel, would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Vice President Martha Tashin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 2017 era of our regular meetings, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, May 19th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I can say that we have everybody in attendance. And before I go to audience communication, I'd like to point out that we are going to table items eight and nine. If counsel has any issues with that, speak now or forever hold your peace, but we're going to be looking at it at a different time. Silence.
His gold is...
With that, I'm going to go right to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, please make your way to the podium and you have name and address in three minutes. Good evening.
Hi, Cindy Fleming Woodring. I just want to invite the public, counsel, anyone who's here tonight, to the Seedlings Braille Books for Children Open House, which is actually tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At 5:00, they will be doing, the Chamber of Commerce will be doing a ribbon cutting for their expanded building. We'd love to see everybody come out. They've invited one of, a young child who's actually an author of one of their books, which is kind of exciting, and we'll hope to see you all there. Thanks.
And that's Farmington Road still, right?
Yes.
So it's the same place. If anybody hasn't, it's basically north of 96 on the west side of the road.
Yeah.
Listen, if you can do that one too, I would highly recommend it. It's one of the best organizations. We have great service groups, but this is something that is incredible and it's home in our city, so.
Yep, they're in between Looney Baker and Christ Our Savior Lutheran Church. So if you go to the northmost driveway by Christ Our Savior and just go in there, you will find...
Yeah, totally a great time. Everybody's put it on the calendars. Thank you. Any other audience communication? Here we go. Name and address, three minutes, sir.
Nicholas McCard, 29891 Robert Drive. I just wanted to actually give another shout out for an event that's happening this weekend. Us at the Wilson Barn, we had the Mother's Day Craft Show on Saturday. We have over 40 craft vendors, bakers, and artists and nonprofits all getting together to have this show. We are going to have a wood-fired pizza truck, which they have delicious food, brand new. They just opened up last week, so want to invite everybody out there. We do have a lot of events happening at the Wilson Barn coming up, and the Wilson Barn Farmers Market starts on June 21st, so hope to see everyone there.
Exciting, man. Thanks, guys. Great. Any other audience communications? Seeing none, I'm going to go to counsel. I'm going to do, I just could say we have new data on item number three, and I'll open it up. Anybody got any words for the great or good? With that, we're going to move right into the study agenda. A new business, item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from St. Rafiki in order to hold a cultural festival with music played by a DJ and a live band at St. Rafiki Catholic Church located at 32765 Linden Street on Friday, August 8, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. till midnight; Saturday, August 9, from 1:00 p.m. till midnight; and Sunday, August 10, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if the representative's here.
Oh, you're here. Perfect.
Oh.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good.
I was going to offer an approving. This has been done numerous times in our city. You do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And I just want to offer an approving for those hours, et cetera.
Consent okay?
Mm-hmm.
Any objections from counsel? Do you want to give a, you know, tell us what you've got going on, maybe get the millions of viewers out there?
Yeah, yeah. It's our annual St. Raffka Church Festival. I know a lot of people in the city of Livonia attend every year. We have homemade Middle Eastern food, live music, kids' activities, dancing. It's a great time for the whole family, and it's a great way for us to show off our community to the city and the surrounding area.
Awesome. If there's anything we could do to help, please send us some information to counsel.
Absolutely.
I think there's a card right there.
Yeah.
And we'll get it on the city's website. We'll try.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll do that.
Awesome. So we got an approving on consent. Any objections from the audience or concerns, comments? Seeing none? We'll see you hopefully then.
All right. We hope to see all of you there in August.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number two is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This is coming from the Basilica of St. Mary's Orthodox Church in order to host a festival with live music in the rear parking lot at 18100 Merriman Road on Friday, August 15, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m.; Saturday, August 16, from noon until 11:59; and Sunday, August 17, from noon until 10:00 p.m. Is the petitioner here? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll open up for counsel. Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
We've an approving on consent. Any other comments from the audience or from counsel? Seeing none?
Yep.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank St. Mary's because they've done a really good job over the last couple of years of addressing the noise complaints and the decibel meters and the bass and all of that. And I think this is the first year that we really haven't had a preponderance of complaints going into the event.
Absolutely.
So we really appreciate you working with the residents and with us on this. And for anyone who hasn't been, this is a great event. It's a really fun time.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, one other thing I'd just like to add is that under the same parameters that we've had before as far as the noise levels and things like that.
Absolutely.
Nothing's changing.
Nothing's changing.
Okay.
We follow everything.
Okay.
And Livonia's police has been involved, and we hired the special security to keep the decimals and everything in place.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
We're not changing anything else.
Councilwoman Toye?
If I may. I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry.
Miss Reen Barshini.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Miss Barshini.
Yeah.
Usually, I'm trying to remember his name that you...
Wafi, my husband.
Just such an improvement to see a nice woman coming up to our podium.
I'm always behind the scenes.
Nothing against your husband.
I do everything.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
And he's the one in there.
Yes, yes. He's a very good man. I don't mean it that way, but usually you have an opening, and Father George is there, and the counsel comes. What time is that at?
And then we invite you all. Normally, the opening is Thursday.
Yeah.
Because of the Arder Mission Festival is normally the August 14. This is when we celebrate.
Yes.
But Father George always have you guys coming on, like Friday evening, and we cut the ribbon, and I hope all of you can make it this year.
Yeah, what time would you need us there, though? We're around...
Friday, whatever. Counselor Toye's trying to get around.
Whatever can be. I'm just trying to get out my schedule.
Can I ask what the weather's going to be that day, too?
You tell me what time, and I'll make sure.
Okay, okay. I don't like to miss it because you have some awesome food.
I know.
Yeah.
So you tell me. You let me know what time, and I'll make sure.
Were you writing that down? Are you writing that down?
You're darn right.
I'll write it down. What time would you like?
Oh.
Seriously, seriously, Father George obeys.
Mr. President?
I'm yield to my learning hours.
Through the chair to Ms. Toye. Do you need a plus one? Do you want me to go with you?
All of you are invited.
Yes, please. Yeah, we're all invited.
Is Councilman...
Yes, absolutely.
Is Councilman Donavich still singing the opening act this year?
I'll email you guys.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. I didn't want to be embarrassing, sorry.
With that, counsel, any other comments? We have an approving on consent. Audience, any comments? Seeing none? Just get Councilwoman Toye that date and time.
I will. I will.
I don't think she's going to sleep tonight. She'll have that on the calendar. So your matter is all but assured to pass, and send it to us, and hopefully we'll see you there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Say hi to your husband.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item three is a waiver petition. Comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-02-02-06 submitted by NC Designers and Contracting requesting waiver use approval to construct a 2,117 square foot full-service oil change at 27410 Joy Road. Mr. Terminan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it's a request, it's a waiver petition involving the construction of a new oil change facility. This property is at the northwest corner of Joy and Inkster Roads. It's about a third of an acre, 100 by 150. Property's been vacant now for about 30 years.
Yeah.
It's zoned commercial. It contained a house that was removed in the mid-1990s. The plan is to build a, an oil change facility. That building would be about a little bit over 2,100 square feet. There are two access, two driveways that access the property, one on Joy, one on Inkster Road. The new data that you received this evening addresses one of the issues that was raised by the Planning Commission, and that is moving that driveway a little further north on the property along Inkster Road. So the plan you have shows that driveway moved to the north part of the site. Parking, there'd be three spaces which should be adequate for this type of use. Circulation would be counterclockwise, or vehicles would enter from the west side of the building and exit the east side. There are three proposed bays. The building is, as you would expect, storage room, mechanical lobby, cashier, and of course bathroom and those work bays. The building itself looks like this. It's gray or dark, dark gray brick. It has silver metal coping. There's amethyst on the sides of the buildings. The red metal panel address along the front entranceway that's facing Inkster Road. Dumpster enclosure was another issue. There is a utility line that runs along the north side of the property. It's our understanding that that, those utility lines will have to be relocated, in which case the dumpster can stay in its current position. Some lighting needs to be addressed. That's not a big issue. They'll have to comply with the illumination limits in the zoning ordinance. The other big issue is the unpaid taxes, and then stormwater on the site will have to be presented underground, so they'll have to develop an underground storage system. Planning Commission is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Can you guys introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Rob Bouchel. I'm with NC Designers and Architects.
My name is Todd Ballow. I'm the purchaser. I'm purchaser of the property, basically.
So neither of you guys are the current owners, though?
No.
No? Okay, well, I have a number of concerns, but the biggest concern I have right now, one of them, is there's roughly $15,000 in back taxes, roughly $5,000 or so on this existing parcel, and then another $11,000 on the parcel to the north. So what is the plan to get both of those parcels paid off? Not just one, but both of them?
So I have purchase agreement in my hand that guarantees that will be paid off before I take ownership, basically.
I appreciate this, sir. When you say "that will be paid off," are we talking about your parcel that you're under contract with? Or are we talking about both parcels?
Both parcels.
Okay.
Because the purchase is on both parcels.
Okay, well, I know our clerk's here, so we're going to verify those parcel ID numbers and verify if you could submit new data to our department to show. And it'd be nice to see documentation from the title company as well, stipulating in the statements that those numbers we've broken out at closing that both, because again, there's roughly $15,000 in back due taxes right now that need to be paid off. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. I'll go to Vice President, and I got Councilwoman Sheil.
Thank you. Actually, one of my concerns was also the back taxes, but Mr. Donavich has handled that. The north side easement with the power lines, if you are going to raise that dumpster, how, I guess, how are we going to address that? Are you going to have those buried? What are we going to do? And I know Mr. Terminan addressed it a little bit.
I mean, there's, I guess there's a couple of options that we would pursue. The least expensive would be obviously the main choice. So if we, if we move the dumpster to, I guess, to avoid those lines, we can certainly do that. I mean, I guess so, in essence, we're kind of flexible on how that's going to lay out.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I don't have any representation on the plan here to even indicate where that pole is, where the lines are. I mean, ideally, we would not want to move them. We would just shift the dumpster, because that would be the easiest route of that as to...
Because we're going to need that access to the dumpster, for sure.
Yes.
It becomes a safety concern as well.
Correct.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, from what I can tell based on the survey and the site plan is that the, one of the poles for that overhead utility is located somewhere in the driveway about here, if you can see where I'm hovering over. So really, the option would be to push the driveway further to the south, extend this green belt along the north side of the property so that it includes that utility pole, and then do an equal shift both in the placement of the dumpster and possibly with the building. So that, it's possible to do that and still have enough room to maneuver around the building. The other choice, again, is to relocate those utility poles, but that does not come without, you know, it's an expensive venture.
Sure. Okay. Hours of operation that you're planning?
So it's going to be from 8:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m.
Okay, seven days a week?
Seven days a week, but Sundays from 10 to 4.
Okay, great. And then one other thing that came up during the Planning Commission meeting, they talked about some landscape screening along Joy Road to keep headlight spill from going onto Joy. Is that...
Yes, that's been addressed. I believe we have some shrubs that are approximately 36 inches high, so when they're fully grown, it'll act as a, like a barrier.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Those are my concerns, but honestly, that corner has been for 30 years, so I appreciate you coming into the community and looking to develop that, so...
We'll make it look better.
Welcome to Livonia. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Sheil?
Hi, yes, thank you. I want to go back to the taxes that are due. So you're saying your purchase agreement states that the taxes will be paid at closing?
Yes.
Who's paying the taxes? You or the seller?
Seller.
And how soon do you plan on closing?
So if this gets approved, basically, I'm telling the title company to start doing the paperwork and close in a week, maybe two max.
Okay, so you're waiting on an approval from counsel for you to close?
Exactly, because that was one of my conditions before I buy the property, to be approved for what I'm trying to do, basically.
Okay, so are you looking by the end of May, the end of June?
I mean...
Within a couple of weeks after approval?
It's going to be probably two weeks max after approval.
Okay.
So just basically, we're waiting for you guys to approve it, and if you guys do, we're calling the title company and moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Toye?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for coming to our community and approving the site. It's been pretty vacant for a pretty long time, as has been mentioned. My colleagues make some great points. I just, I would like, yeah, I would like to see almost that $17,000 paid, but we need that assurance, you know, because if we approve you, you know, we, I don't know, our city attorney knows a lot more.
I mean, I do have a purchase agreement in my hand. I can show it to you, and it says it.
Councilwoman Toye, would you...
Usually, we have a check or something.
Would you mind if I just jump in really quick?
Please, would you? Yeah.
Mr. Terminan, can we, or even Mr. Carter, both of you, both minds, can we put a stipulation that in order to submit for plans or for plan review and building inspection or for building permits, that the taxes be paid up? Is there a stipulation that we can add to that? Just to, just to have a little bit of skin in the game on this one?
I think you could stipulate to something along those lines, a stipulation that before...
Any permits are issued?
Any permits are issued, or certainly a certificate of occupancy is issued.
CFO goes a little bit further, and I would almost feel better with, with the building permit. I'll go to Councilman Donavich.
Mr. President, I appreciate that sentiment, but I think it's easier. I think we just deny them. They owe $17,000 nearly in taxes. I think we deny it. Otherwise, they can pay their taxes. A lot of us have purchased homes before, and the future we'll purchase homes. There's nearly $16,735 in the owned property taxes, and that should be paid before the approving happens. If the petitioner's serious, you'll tell the seller that if you don't pay your $17,000 in taxes, we're not going to closing table. I appreciate the purchase agreement. PAs can be, can be construed how they will with attorneys, but I think the emphasis for you this evening, respectfully, sir, is get the seller on the phone tonight and say, "Pay your property taxes." Otherwise, you're not going to get this deal closed. I'm sure that the seller wants to get this transaction done. Our residents don't deserve to have $17,000 in back due taxes and then, then give you an approving, and that's how we reward you. I appreciate what you and your architect are doing, but you look at our perspective. We all pay our taxes, as you both understand. So, you know, Mr. President, I think that we can offer an approving and denying this evening at the study. The regular will be in two weeks, and they'll have more than enough time to, to get those paid before that vote takes place. That's my position. Thank you, Mr. President.
So can we throw those, sort of approving and denying? Are you good with putting those motions forward?
I will offer the denying motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Toye?
Mr. Chair, I respect my colleague here. I'm going to offer the approving as well. That way, at least, we keep it on the table and, as he said, but, I mean, we're serious about this. We, I mean, you know, we need our money upfront.
I'm serious about it, too, but I'm not the owner of the land, so I understand you guys trying to get your money.
I appreciate that, sir, but we've had situations where we went ahead and approved, and it didn't come to fruition, and you'll cause us a lot of extra headache, and I'm sure you too. So we want to welcome you. We want you to be here, but we need, we need the money. We really do.
I would just, and so we've an approving and a denying. My thoughts on this is, can I, can I just ask you guys a question, more for you, for the business owner?
Okay.
In the event that the owner will not pay them, and it is contingent on this closing, and you do not get, you get a denial, do you walk from this potentially?
So if I get a denial, and, yeah, definitely, I'll walk, for sure.
Okay.
Because I'm spending a lot of money.
I just, I want it for the record, because we do have an approving and a denying, and if there was some kind of stipulation that he, that plans couldn't be submitted for until this, would that be something that you guys would agree to?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I did this before a couple of times, and when you close through the title company, they make sure all these taxes are paid.
I know.
So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to do. I figured, you know, that would be easier for you guys, because the title company, when we close, let's say, a week from now or two weeks from now, they're going to pay it right there and then, so...
Let me ask you another question.
That's before they give him his money.
You guys, being here right now, this is something, in my opinion, are you guys looking to break ground? If approved, you're looking to break ground pretty fast?
Yeah.
Like this spring? Are you, you're laughing.
Yes, yes.
You're probably a bulldozer on Sunday.
We're trying to move quick, so...
Okay.
That's why...
For the colleagues, I just want to be able to say that. So right now, we have an approving on the regular and a denying on the regular. See what you can do, and we'll see you back here on May 19.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I will note that there are, again, two properties. So there's a subject property that will be developed, and then there's 8853 Inkster Road, $11,319.25 owed, and then the subject property is $5,461. So, you know, there could be some onus there on the subject property.
Totally.
But then we'd still be out on the 8853 Inkster Road.
I'm just putting it in context just so...
I guarantee you that both of them will be paid off.
Guarantees are, you know what I mean?
I know, but I'm buying both of them, so, I mean, at the title company, they're going to be paid off.
I hear you.
So...
No, I appreciate you guys coming in. I would see what you could do, and I'm going to go to the Vice President right now. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it also be possible, when you come back for the next regular, to have the changes that we talked about as far as what you're going to do with the utilities and, you know, so we can see a final site plan?
I'll make sure that's done, too.
Okay. Is the maker of the motion okay with that stipulation in there? Thank you.
Maker's.
Mr. Chair, the treasurer's here tonight. I don't know if we need to hear from her or not. If she's quick, we need to, but if she's not...
Do you want to, do you want to address? Can I have your name, just for the record, please?
Good evening, Susan Nash, Livonia City Treasurer. Yes, Mr. Donavich has the numbers correctly, that the property they're talking about right now is what they owe, the $5,000, not the $5,461.25, and then there is the adjoining property where there is the back taxes for $11,319.25.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Terminan, I know that the petitioner handed you a purchase agreement. Can we get that issued as new data? Because again, our subject property on our packet is for 27410 Joy Road. That's the project that's being developed, not the parcel to the north, correct?
That is correct, but as he indicated, he's purchasing both properties, and this purchase agreement is for both properties.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Budzinski?
Just out of curiosity, do you have an intent to develop the north portion of the property?
For right now, I don't want to, so that way I can keep, like, basically, I don't want to bother the neighbor next door. You just keep it as trees and stuff for right now, but maybe in the future, but for right now, we're not, no. But, maybe in the future, but for right now, we're not, no.
And just to put one last, are you good with that? With that being said, Mr. Fisher, maybe Mr. Torre, more probably Mr. Fisher. The property to the north that is not subject to this development, in the event that there was a stipulation of taxes being paid before issuance of permits, could that property be levied as well if it's not under construction? I just want, I want to give you guys a clear path in it, because if that's the case...
If I could make it easier for you guys, you can just tell me whatever he owes, I can cut you a chunk, and minus that out of the purchase agreement, that would be fine with me, because it's gonna, it's gonna happen either or, the same way, you know? So, to me, I don't have an issue, because it's getting minus out of his money, so...
What I want to do is just get the information, so that, basically, at the regular, we have...
Mr. President, I think that's a great, shows what a good corporate steward this person is, that he wants to handle a situation for residents. Our treasurer's here, I imagine she'd be glad to work with you, sir.
Absolutely.
Be glad to take it, but he needs to pay it through the county.
Wayne County?
Yes.
Sure.
I can give you paperwork right here, I can come over there and give it to you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to, just, to confirm with the landowner, if he gives me the okay, right away, I'll pay it, so, but, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheel.
I was just going to say, it has to be paid to Wayne County. It cannot come to Livonia, it has to go to Wayne County.
Awesome. All right, so we've been approving, we have a denying. We'll see you back here on the 19th. Am I right? Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Any comments from the audience? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number four, is a request to approve. Early voting plan comes to us from the Office of the City Clerk, in reference to local elections to be held on 2000, held in 2025. Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President McCullough. Our issue has to do with early voting. As you know, it started last year with the rollout of the presidential election. Last year, in its initial phases, we weren't sure how well that would take off. The first two elections, it was kind of weak, but by the third election for the presidential, we had more than 9,000 voters who voted early. So, under this new law, early voting is not required for local elections. It's only required for state and federal. However, our Election Commission met in the spring, actually, in February, to discuss what we might want to offer this year for our local elections. So, the Election Commission came up with a new plan for early voting for this year. For both elections, it was voted on and decided unanimously to provide two days only of early voting, the Saturday and Sunday before each election. And the hours of voting would be 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And instead of taking it off-site, it would take place here at City Hall in the lobby. City Hall is closed on the weekend, and our office is already working those hours, so we will already be here on-site, and it will save us the time and energy of taking our equipment off-site. So, this is a great opportunity. It's a compromise to offer additional hours of early voting for our residents, which they got used to last year, but it doesn't strain our department by doing the full nine days, which we did not feel for a local election would be necessary. One of the requirements under the law states that the legislative body of the municipality must adopt a resolution to approve the early voting plan. So, that's what we're here for tonight, is to get your approval of our plan.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Who's on the Election Commission, again, Lori?
The Election Commission is comprised of the mayor, myself, and our city attorney, Carter Fisher.
Well, you know, I think the law, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was to give not only more, I don't want to say transparency, but it gave voters the option of having a little bit longer time to vote.
Expanded voters, right.
Expanded, that's it. And going down to two days from nine, that's pretty drastic. I mean, in my view, but, maybe I'm wrong, but, so nine to four, and I know that staffing and everything else, did they consider any, maybe four days out of the nine?
It was discussed when we met. However, we already have 25,548 on our permanent ballot list. We also have over 10,000 on our permanent application list. And typical voter turnout for a city election is between 19 and 21%. So, the cost of manning it would probably not, we would not see that much of a benefit for our voters.
Okay, I like the fact you moved it to City Hall, because that'll give you more space. That fireplace was kind of tight, from what I understood from people that went there. Okay, I just, I needed that information in my head.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, counsel? Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yeah, so, could you just remind myself and others? If individuals wanted to do an absentee ballot, like, the week before, they could go into City Hall and request an absentee ballot, and vote, and turn it in to you guys at...
Here at City Hall, but it's not tabulated. So, you can still vote absentee. The difference is, if you vote at the early voting site, your ballot actually goes through the tabulator. You also have the option of taking your absentee ballot to the early voting site, and then running it through the tabulator. So, there are all kinds of options. We are allowed to issue ballots up until the Monday before an election. Monday is emergency absentee ballot are issued here at our office, till 4:00 p.m.
But otherwise, the week prior?
The week prior, we issue over the counter all day long.
Could come in in a different type of way, but still in a concise time period?
Absolutely.
Vote in City Hall?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
And I'm sorry, I may have missed this, but if people are on the absentee ballot list, they will be mailed a ballot, is that correct?
We maintain two separate lists. So, there's the permanent ballot list, where they do not need to complete an application, and the ballot is automatically mailed to them. The second list is the permanent application list, where they're receiving the application, but they do not necessarily have to return it, and they will not get a ballot unless they complete the application.
Okay, so the people who are on the permanent ballot list will receive a voting slip in the mail, and they can mail it back, or they can drop it off at City Hall, or they can bring it to a tabulator, a site where...
To our early voting site and run it through a tabulator. Yep, they have all kinds of options.
Or on the day of.
Several options.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, counsel, we do not have a motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve that on consent.
We've been approving on consent.
I'd like that to go on regular, please, just so that can be explained.
We've been approving on regular.
Good idea.
Any other comments, questions from counsel? Anything from the audience? Okay. Moving on to item number five, right? Yes. Is proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us, again, from the Offices of City Clerk, to revise sections, sections to Title I, Chapter 1.08, as election precincts, to maintain ballot alignment within previous consolidated precincts. Clerk?
That's a mouthful, yep. So, you may all recall that we started this year off with an ambitious and aggressive plan to consolidate our precincts. We came before you and sought your approval. Our precincts are spelled out in our city ordinances. We went from 44 precincts down to 26. Once we did that, and we had council's approval, we submitted everything to the State of Michigan, to the Bureau of Elections. They did a deep dive and reviewed all of the data that we submitted to them, and we found out that we had inadvertently created a split precinct. So, a split precinct is one location where there's two ballots. And that, of course, creates a lot of headache, both from our standpoint to administer it, for the election inspectors running the precinct, and then also for the voters. So, the State of Michigan gave us some guidance and some advice. They offered us two alternatives. One, we could leave it the way we had designed it in the consolidation, and deal with a split precinct. Or, we could shift that small group of people over from what we had created at 23 precinct, and move them to precinct 24, where their ballot would be in alignment, and that would deal with the split completely. So, we would need to notify those voters. Their voter location does not change at all. They used to vote at Grant. In our consolidation that we proposed in March, they would still vote at Grant. And with this change, they would still vote at Grant. So, we just are trying to clean it up because of the data flaw. We want to make sure that everyone has the simplest way to vote. That was the plan in this whole consolidation process. It was reviewed at our Election Commission meeting in April, and it was approved to move it over and make it a succinct precinct and no split ballots. So, that's what we're coming before you to amend that little section.
Sounds good. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question, through the chair to the clerk. So, are all these people that are affected going to be mailed new voter cards again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how many is that going to affect, about roughly?
There weren't that many, it's about 548 people that were put in the wrong precinct.
Just want to make sure with confusion that they don't, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel? We do need a motion.
I'll make a motion, and we can just put it on regular to be consistent.
Okay. We've been approving on regular. Any comments from the audience? Anything else from counsel? All right. All right, so we got two approvings on regular.
Thank you.
And we'll see you at that meeting.
I'll be there.
Item six, is a request to extend contract with Bound Tree Medical. Comes to us from our Livonia Fire and Rescue, in reference to emergency medical supplies and equipment not to exceed $130,000 annually from budgeted funds. How are you?
Very good. Good evening, council members. The line item in the fire department budget...
Hey, can we just, just, just for the millions of viewers out there, can you grace us with who you are?
Now, sir, I thought everyone would recognize me.
I do.
My recent foray into Hollywood.
Everybody does, but the millions of viewers that are out there just might want to know who this awesome dude is.
Yes, my name is John McKee, and I serve as a training officer for Livonia Fire and Rescue. And amongst my various duties, I am in charge of the EMS supply project.
Love it.
That line item budget, I'm sorry, that line item amount in our budget is $184,000 a year. We have operated for a number of years under the Southeast Michigan Emergency Medical Supplies Cooperative. And essentially, the city of Farmington Hills started this cooperative. They get vendors to compete and offer the best prices, and a number of communities are involved in this. This cooperative is run underneath the auspices of the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. And your fire department has operated, assuming everything was well within all the codes. The finance department notified us that maybe perhaps it would be best if we got a council resolution authorizing it, just to cross all our Ts and dot our Is. So, therefore, I humbly come before you tonight, if I may paraphrase a little bit of my recent acting, show me the resolution approval.
That's why I wanted to give you your, you're going to get discovered now. Just listen, remember Livonia when you make it in the big times in L.A.
I'm taking you with me, kids.
Yes.
Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Captain. You had me at medical supplies.
Oh!
You guys practiced it.
We did not.
I want to help the city of Livonia save money. Help me help you.
I'm having fun.
Well, Captain, I'll, let me help you by offering an approving on consent. No, joking aside, the LFD does a great job, and EMS runs, I know, have been up over the years tremendously. I think, what, they're up 72%, I think, in the last few years, and they do a great job. So, obviously, we need to keep them, you know, stocked with what they need, and this is from budgeted funds, so I'll offer an approving on consent, all joking aside.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, sir, thanks for being here. We look at the packet, it talks about contractual terms, so would this, this would expire in 2026, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd be back before us in '26, I'm assuming, for an extended period of time.
I would say you get the joy of having me again in 2026.
I'm excited. Just surprise, don't tell me the dates next time, just surprise me, please. Thank you. Councilwoman Toye.
If I made it, Mr. McKee. Mr. McKee, how many ambulances do we provide for our city?
We staff a minimum of five ambulances. 24/7, 365.
Yep, yep.
There are times when we will staff a sixth ambulance, especially for special events. But all our engines are also staffed by fully qualified paramedics. For the statistic nerds in the audience, we ran just under 11,000 EMS calls last year.
Yeah, I wonder.
We're busy.
Where did most of those go? Is there any rhyme or reason to those?
In terms of where do we transport them? Or where?
Do you pick up at the nursing centers much more than you would a home residential? Or do you find home residentials outweighing those, or?
I would say, if I were to run the numbers, that a fair portion go to what we call extended care facilities, nursing homes, facilities like that, skilled nursing.
And did they reimburse us for those rides?
The facilities do not, however, the patients' medical insurance does.
Insurance, okay.
Yes. On average, we are able to collect approximately $240,000 to $260,000 a month, and those funds are returned to the general fund.
Right. Well, you do a great job. Unfortunately, my family was one that used those quite a few times, and appreciate your skills and the compassion that those, particularly gentlemen, showed my family. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, man.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, we have an approving on consent. Any questions from the audience? All right. It's been a pleasure.
Pleasure's all mine, sir, thank you. Great to see you, have a good night. You, too.
All right. Not, listen, I know Casey, listen, it's a tough act to follow, but we have a request to renew software maintenance agreement with a sole source provider. Comes to us from our Department of Information Systems with ESRI, which is E-S-R-I, for the city's geographic, GIS systems for a period of one year. Listen, I think this is cool, too.
Fighting stuff.
Tell us a little about it.
Yeah, this is our renewal of our GS, or Geographic Information Systems, system. The GIS platform provides the city with critical mapping and spatial analysis capabilities for several departments, including engineering, DPW, planning, assessing, inspection, and fire. We also support several public-facing mapping applications on the city website. Total cost is $32,934, and I'd be happy to answer to questions.
Awesome. Counsel?
I'll have an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent, and you got a support from Councilwoman Toye, too, which is not usually something you're going to get in a study, but you got it.
It's like an exclamation point.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Is there any comments from counsel? Anything from the audience?
Thank you.
Good to see you. With that, I'm going to now go back to the audience for items not on the current agenda. If you'd like to speak, make your way up to the podium, you have three minutes, name and address. Yep?
Yes.
Yes. Come on, man.
Yeah, the first one, the first one.
Yeah, you're right.
Yep.
Back to pickleball. All right. Laura brought something up at the seven o'clock meeting, and I just wanted to expound upon it. It came to my attention that some of the council candidates had an issue with some of their paperwork. And I spoke directly with the clerk about it. So, you fill the paperwork out, and it has to be filled out properly, because you sign an affidavit specifically stating this, what I'm saying is true. So, I was told there was, like, maybe three candidates. A couple of candidates discovered their mistakes, and they came back and made everything right before the deadline, and that's proper. But some people did not. And so, those, those people should not be in the council race, because the law is clear. So, speaking with our clerk, it went downtown, came back to her, couldn't get an opinion from Mr. Carter, and she said she came down on the side of democracy. I agree, you know, everybody loves democracy. And she wasn't, she said, "I don't, didn't think that was the spirit of the law." Well, I'm here to tell you that the clerk is not within her purview to say what the spirit of the law is. She's just there to, it's black and white, to enforce the law, as the laws are written. So, she's not a judge, there is no interpretation. And I'm, I think, I hope, Laura, I hope you're going to speak to this, because I think that's what you put into the committee of the whole, you guys are going to investigate exactly what happened. I think it should be made public, good, bad, or indifferent, because this is how we lose trust in this city. So many things go on behind closed doors, and you hear a rumor, and I see a document, and then, okay, bring it out. Sunshine, transparency, have that discussion, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening. How are you, Mr. Martin?
Running a little late. Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan, as always. Two things I'd like to talk about. One is the, this was on the consent agenda, but this was about the spree, and there were two issues. Fireworks was one of them, and holding the spree and the rides was another part of that. And at that particular time, I stated that, and it was just glossed over, okay? Focus was put on the fireworks, aren't they nice? But anyway, at that particular time, I asked that we periodically, random, give breathalyzers to the guys, the carnival ride technicians, let's call them, okay? Other people have different words for them, okay? But I really think that those guys should be given minimum, a breathalyzer. Police department can do that, minimum, that that be done. Now, I know there's going to be people that are against it or whatever, because we don't want to close down rides, okay? It's a money-making thing, make over 500 grand at the spree, okay? So, anyway, that was one thing I wanted to talk about. I think that's a big mistake by not doing that, okay? I know that's going to disappoint some of you, because, let's have a party, let's have the count, you know, let's have the rides. The second thing was, leading up to Easter, our library was closed again Friday and Saturday, and I had to go to a different location, different library, at a surrounding city, okay? Thing about that is, I'm paying taxes here, okay? And I mentioned this before, and I was told by one of our, well, you can go talk to the, in a snotty tone, you can go talk to the library commission, okay? Maybe they'll change something. But really, when other cities have their libraries open, we should be open, okay? That's how it should be. And I mentioned that one other time, and was given the suggestion to go and talk with the library committee, okay? Well, you know, I got the solution for that. When other surrounding libraries are open, we should be open, period, end of story. Why pay taxes here? And we're going to knock down the library and build another library and all this. If you're not going to have it open, then I got to go to another library of surrounding city. What kind of nonsense is that? So, anyway, those libraries should be open, okay? At least the main one here, Civic Center Library, or whichever you want to refer to it as, that that should be open, okay? When other cities, surrounding cities, have their libraries open, period, end of story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, any other audience communication? I'm going to go back to City Council, and I will say that, to Mr. King's point, that will be scheduled very, very soon. We'll get it out there. I think that there's a potential targeting Monday, potentially. I think, more to come on that, but it'll be posted.
No, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe we should go to the city attorney and clear some of it up real quick, you know, because I think, I think, or the clerk, do we have any opinions on that? Maybe we can clear that up.
Absolutely do.
Resident, okay.
Absolutely.
Residents are coming in.
I understand.
And I just want to clear the air, because I don't want to get into a committee where it's all crazy.
I would be happy to clear the floor. So, it is up to the clerk to decide what names appear on the ballot, that is clear. I can assure you that I have reviewed the last nine local election files, which continues to be over 18 years. And in those 18 years, there were several, actually, a multitude of names, that appeared on the ballot in the five clerks before me. So, it is absolutely up to the clerk to decide. Um, what happened here was a scrivener's error, there was no malicious intent, there was no lying, those who lied on their affidavits were immediately disqualified, and that's well within the purview and the right of the law for me to disqualify them for lying. But creating a scrivener's error does not disqualify people. I have a stack of them here, which I can show you, Mr. King, um, you may be one of them, whose names appeared on the ballots for the last eighteen years, who had incomplete, inaccurate, and misinformation on their forms, so much so, that some of those people have been elected, they have served our community well, and it is up to those who vote to decide if these people should run. Not up to a scrivener's error to automatically disqualify them. It's a matter of the law, it's to prove that they have met our charter requirements. The candidate in question has met our charter requirements, and therefore, that person's name will be on the ballot. I have discussed this with a multitude of clerks, here at the state level, the county level, all throughout the tri-county area, not one clerk that I spoke with said that they would have disqualified a candidate for a clerical error. So, there are nineteen qualified candidates running, and we are lucky as a community to have nineteen candidates coming from all different areas of life. That is a great representation to me of democracy, and it is up to our voters to ultimately make the decision. If political opponents want to challenge it, they have the right to do so, but they must file a complaint, which you and I discussed, with the civ- circuit court. It will be up to the court to decide. A clerk is not going to take away democracy, not for a scrivener's error. Had it been a lie or an outright omission, then they, that person would have been disqualified. And unfortunately, not one person who was spreading all these rumors brought it to my attention until well after the deadline. So, I am trying to rise above local politics and not get sucked into this, and that is how I run my office. It will be a fair and equal election, and it's not gonna be political at my end.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask you, what, if I made a clerk, uh, Madam Clerk, um, what is a scribbler's thing, does that mean they scribbled or something? I, I, just to clarify, my...
They wrote something wrong.
Okay, okay.
They transposed a number.
Okay.
This boils down to transposing a number.
Okay, okay.
So, would you wanna be disqualified because you transposed a number? Does that make you inadequate to lead us? No.
No, I, I understand that, uh, and I don't, I mean, all these candidates are...
It's up to the voters.
Are on, and I know that, don't get me wrong, and I'm not questioning that, I, personally, I'm just saying, there, if I read the law, because I sat on the elections, um, up in Lansing, and I know that the law states certain, you know, qualifications of, not qualifications, certain things they have to do on their affidavit, um, and I think that's where the questions were coming in, I think.
I understand that.
And I, yeah.
I do understand.
And I was trying to understand it, too, and that's why I thought, get it out in the air, let's be transparent.
That's why I looked at, at Livonia's historical practices, for eighteen years, people's names have appeared on the ballot that had incomplete, inaccurate forms. Some of them are elected, some of them may be in this room. Some of them appeared, and some of them are making these allegations against me. And unfortunately, I will use your own words, judge what's going on by what has happened in the past. Those were, that was your advice to me as a resident, and I did that advice, and looked through eighteen years' worth of files that have many affidavits that are inadequate and have errors.
Oh, heck, I brought them, I don't know.
Mr. President, uh, I'd like to, uh, thank our clerk for the work you're doing and providing equal access to our candidates, and, uh, uh, thank you for your office's work.
Yes, so with that, just to, just to clarify, I think, yes, the floor is yours.
Just to clear the air.
Yes.
I wanna clear the air.
Clear it.
Because this has come up numerous times.
The floor is yours.
I, we've all gotten phone calls, we've all gotten, it was nothing against any candidate, I don't want that to go out of here, because that's baloney. Everybody has a good intent of filing and running, but I do want the city attorney to hold it, hold them as well on this, because I'm sure he's looked at laws and things like that. I was a lawmaker, I'm not a lawbreaker, and I, I just wanna make sure we're on solid ground in this community, because if I did something wrong on my affidavit, I'd wanna know, okay?
Mr. President, I don't know why we're litigating election law when we just heard from our clerk. Our clerk that, that runs elections in our council, and now at nine o'clock at night, all of a sudden, we wanna start having discussions about procedural things that happen outside of the city council's realm, and this is where people start saying, why are we playing politics? All of a sudden, at nine o'clock at night, we're deciding to play politics about council candidates that are running for council.
If I, if I may.
I just find it very ill-timed, all of a sudden, this is coming up.
If I, if I may, I, listen, here, 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 let me, let me see if I can, uh, so right now, targeting Monday at six PM prior to the, I think there's a, the Economic Development Commission, that is a public meeting, it'll be open, and we're gonna be discussing, I think, a lot of these topics, so, um, mark the calendars, they'll be out there, I appreciate the statement, I appreciate the audience's statements, um, and again, just as the clerk[1759.63]